Fledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of the first to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Dick Jr.
Here.
Jason Patrowski.
Here.
Dominic Rivera.
Here.
James Rollo.
Here.
Deborah Marto.
Here.
Bill Cornrall.
Here.
George Taith. Mayor Margaret Stevick here.
All right, thank you. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the last council meeting on February 10th, 2025?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation by the A-Team here. If you'd like to step up here and introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. I'm John. I am the director of...
I just ask you to speak up if you're there or step to the microphone between your ears for me.
I can speak up.
He's just keeping it quiet.
I can pass it.
Yeah, I'd rather say.
Actually, I've been informed about you two. You don't have enough, you put... But I'll take it.
Well, I'm not going to go through every page in this pamphlet, but I'm just going to give you a little overview, and there's details on each page. It kind of goes through who we are and what we do. First and foremost, I just want to express our excitement to be able to partner with you all here soon, sometime in April. But what the A-Team is, is an alternative response team to 911 calls. We respond to mental behavioral health calls in the community instead of police, with police, or after the police have arrived on scene. Our goal is to send the right response to the right call. There's a lot of calls that happen in communities around the United States that, well, the police just aren't equipped to handle those calls, or they don't have time to. There's a lot of times whenever, and Chief will tell you, he's talking with somebody for an hour, two hours, and just trying to listen, and he could support when he could be using his time somewhere else dealing with criminal behavior. We started this program in October of last year, on the 15th. Started in Penn Hills and Monroeville, and then we launched in McKees Rocks in the Housing Authority in January. The Housing Authority is in some select sites close to where we are: East Pittsburgh, Turtle Creek, Little Braddock, Braddock, and Rankin, along with some out in Stowe, in the Penn Hills area. And then this month, we're launching in Churchill, Wilkins, East McKeesport, and Wall as well. So that's kind of where we are. We're looking to expand in different municipalities in the west, above McKees Rocks, and here in the east. Our goal with expansion and going to different places is to make sure that we can respond in a quick time. So if we respond in under 30 minutes or whatever, a 911 call comes in, so that we can be that emergency responder. But if you look in the pamphlet, or the packet, I should say, that I handed you, right after the map, I believe that's page five, it talks about how this program works. And how it works is everything that we do is through the local police department. When a call comes into 911, it goes to the dispatch center in Moon. They dispatch the police, and the police review the criteria of that call, and then they determine if we go instead of them, with them, or if they've arrived on scene, if they need our help at that point in time, they're ready to 911. Then once we get that dispatch, we head to the scene. We're leaving the office or wherever we are within four minutes of getting that call, and we get on scene. Our average is 17 minutes to be on scene from that call. Our office is in Lurding, so we're like seven minutes away. We respond to calls that are suicidality, somebody's depressed, anxious, wants somebody to talk to. We respond to calls that sometimes surround them house, or homelessness, substance use. Our goal is to try and resolve these issues in the community and get the people in the community to help they need in that moment, whatever that need is. And then after we finish our intervention, de-escalate the situation, connect it to an immediate resource, I mean, we transport, we've taken people to get PFAs, we've taken people to the hospital in 201s, 302s, as long as they're safe, to the bus station and get a bus ticket, to the Target to get a car for Uber, whatever it might be, we try to resolve that immediate issue. And then afterwards, within 24 to 48 hours, we follow up with them, depending on how severe the case is. We follow up with them. We try to connect them to long-term services, so that they're not calling back to 911 for the same thing over and over again. And what that'll do is alleviate the pressures on the emergency rooms, which a lot of times people go there and just discharge them anyway, or give the police department more time to deal with other criminal activity or other issues in the communities, and to try and get the people to help they need, so it's not long now and 911 is just going to... And so we follow those people for 90 days until we connect them to services, long-term services. We've been on over 200 calls since October already. I know I just spewed a lot of information really quickly.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Being that we don't necessarily dial 911, we go through Monroeville Dispatch, do you respond if Monroeville Dispatch contacts you?
So 911, if someone calls 911, it actually does go to Moon Township at Aces, and then they transfer to Monroeville, and then Monroeville Dispatches it to Moon Township.
But if the person dials the non-emergency number right to Monroeville Dispatch?
Okay.
Do you work with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been in October since, in Monroeville since October, and they send us...
Where's your base at?
Lurding. At the bottom level of Commerce Plaza, where the old substation used to be.
247?
Uh, no.
No.
We operate, take calls between 10 a.m. and 10 p.m., because when the county did research, this is funded through Department of Human Services, this is no cost to me, but I should have started with that one. That's usually a good point to start with. But when they did the research prior to launch this program, 85% of the calls we would respond to happened between 10 and 10.
How many do you have on your staff that were in these shifts?
So in the east, we have two teams, so we'll have two vans in this area, and one team out in the west.
And a team consists of how many?
Two first responders. We never go to a site alone. We always have two people in the vehicles at all times. And on the way, when we go respond to a 911 call, we call the person to call 911, and we ask them safety questions, ask them what's happening, so we can get more information. We consult with our clinical supervisor, who's always on duty, who's licensed, who's a social worker, or licensed counselor, to try to figure out the best approach, the best modality to interfere with that individual. And then we also let them know who we are, what we look like, so they're not surprised when we're on the line.
What kind of degrees or certifications do these people have that are coming to the calls?
Yeah, so we fall under the state regulations for mobile crisis program. The minimum qualifications for that is, I still have over 12 credit hours in human services with three years of experience. But on my team, I have 30 individuals. I have 14 with master's degrees, 15 with a bachelor's degree, and one with an associate's degree, ranging at a lot of different experiences. Since we respond to people of all ages, with all kinds of backgrounds, we have a very diverse group, so that we can support each other off as a team.
I'm one of those people that have a scanner, and I know that in the very beginning, you said you started in October. I'm kind of thinking back, and I remember that a 30-minute arrival was not done.
Yeah, we've had two that were not done within 30 minutes.
Okay. Are the police or whoever involved notified of your estimated time of arrival?
As soon as we get a call, we let them know of our ETA. With the longer ETAs, it was because we were involved with another case, and then we were letting them know, hey, when we're done, if we're still available, we can come and help you out. But when we calculate areas that we go to, we calculate the travel distance from one municipality to the next one, but sometimes wrap up.
Do you have a priority of when you answer the call? Suppose a possible suicide to, do you prioritize your calls or as they come in?
They don't prioritize. So we just, as soon as it comes in, we're on the road. So if we get a call within four minutes, but usually before we even hang up with 911 or Monroeville, we're on the road to the location. Any other questions?
I have a question.
We have a question in the audience.
Yeah, sure.
You say, I mean, you're being backed by the county, is that correct?
Yes.
So what are you requiring of counsel? You're making this presentation, but what does counsel have to do?
So I've partnered with the chief already. We've had discussions, and we're scheduling training, and this is more informative. But usually, when we go to different areas, every area does something differently. There's no contract that needs to be signed. We have our own liability insurance. It's paid through by the county. But some municipalities, they just say, the chief goes, "Go ahead, we're good." Sometimes the mayor says, "Okay, go." Sometimes they have to vote. It all depends on the municipality we're in. But there's no contractual agreement. It's paid through the county, and we have insurance, so there's no liability on the municipality's end. Any other questions?
I hope you can relieve some pressure off of them. I think that...
That's great.
I want to say something. Yeah, the protocol, you know, we met quite a bit now, and I've been listening for a while now. So the protocol and the standard is set under an umbrella, which I would give to dispatch. We have certain guidelines, stipulations. Do we want a dual response? Do we want them to stage? Do we want them to respond first? That is all going to be by me, but I submit to Monroeville Dispatch. It does come across our CAD. A-Team's been activated. Delayed response due to, you know, another crisis, major crisis, suicidal tendencies will supersede homeless person standing on the corner. So you always have them delays. The program will help offset a lot of the times that we have to sit with individuals for 45 minutes an hour. We've got a juvenile that don't want to go to school, 16, 17 years old. He has mental health crisis. We sit there for an hour and a half, two hours, to talk to them, because the parent don't know what to do. Well, now we activate the A-Team to come out, because it's a behavior issue, and it's a behavior issue, so we will help have this support from them to help us do this. So like he said, they were free to police services out on mental health crisis. So just leave that out there.
Yeah, another thing is, there's a big difference, I think, between you guys and the other crisis team, Resolve. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of Resolve Crisis Team. My experience in EMS is Resolve doesn't do any type of transports. You guys doing transports actually frees up an ambulance and an officer. So if you have somebody that wants to do a two-on-one commitment, the officer doesn't have to transport, and an ambulance doesn't have to transport, correct? Yeah, as long as it's safe to do so. Right. Because my biggest concern is the safety of my team. Yeah. And they want to. We can't force them to go with us, but we also have an ADA ramp, so we can take wheelchairs. Perfect.
We should always have a question to call to if A-Team...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we partner closely with the police departments, and they're on point. They're the, when we're on scene together, they're in charge. We follow them. We're supporting them. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any citizens' comments? I guess not. All right, we'll go with you, Betsy.
The Pick Here employees have worked 135 calls in the month of February. We have collected no mayor's fines.
Ooh.
No, I think there's a mistake there, because...
Well, sometimes it's just the timing of the, when we get those checks from the magistrate's office.
I know she let some big checks in.
Yeah, I mean, we may get them tomorrow, or this, that's when it will be on.
Oh, no state fines. The magistrate, $87, Lurding magistrate, Pick Here magistrate, nothing, county, $530, and the quality of leg, $50. And that's all I have to report. I do know the chair was handling on, for being taken, slake. And the only thing, just for the public, that's what's in you, if you have a young child, and they're going to be riding a bike, they need a helmet. It saves a lot of problems. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Dominic?
I would like to make a motion to purchase a membership to the Turtle Creek Watershed Association.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Questions?
That's just a $50 membership for a municipality or a business. But us redoing this park, I think it's probably a good idea to do bond to the Turtle Creek Watershed Association, maybe clean up, and maybe eventually get a canoe or a kayak launch out there.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I would also like to make a motion to reschedule the borough meeting for Pick Here's May Council Meeting from May 12th to May 19th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reschedule the council meeting in May from the 12th to the 19th. Any questions?
Why we reschedule?
I believe it's due to a bunch of people being out of town. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all the business I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Streets, George isn't with us tonight, so I'll read for him. We have a review of streets for paving. I can kind of deflect this over to our engineer here, Dan, and we can kind of discuss it a little bit, what the expectations are.
Okay, so we received, I think about a week or so ago, we received a list of potential streets that the borough was interested in repaving or sort of seeing reconstructing. We went out and took a look at them, took some measurements, talked to Jim and Mark about what their thoughts were on the different streets, and so we prepared this spreadsheet. Like Center and School, we looked at. We anticipated just milling and overlaying in those streets. They didn't look like they had too much of a structural issues. We do have some money in air for base repair if there is some base issues on those roads. Wall Avenue, this is from Agatha to where we paved at as part of the Culver project. That street's pretty bad. It's been tore up by the utilities and all that, so we were thinking more of a deeper mill, putting a binder course in, and then overlaying that, just to give it some more strength. And we had a lot of base repairing because of all the bad areas.
I was going to say, is that why the price is higher for that?
Yeah. When we walked it, there was just a lot of areas that seemed like they had a lot of potential base failure, just because of the types of cracking stuff. We really wouldn't know that till we got it milled off, but definitely included some more in there, just to do that in case we ran into that. And the last section, it are basically reconstruction, east or streets, or parts of intersections that still have bricks. For example, when I talked to Jim, like the 3rd Street, that number's not very high, even though it's a brick replacement, because we were just talking about at the very intersection, a third of Highland, we weren't going too far up the street, just so the bricks are exposed there at the beginning. 11th Street, they, the street crew went out, they did some exploratory drilling on the street to see which areas had brick and which areas were just asphalt. So they, when they did their checks, it looked like only the lower section by Highland was brick.
Is that the, like, the hump there, between you two?
Between, I'm sorry, that section, yeah, between Highland and Britain. Section by Britain looked like it still has bricks like Britain does.
Yeah.
And so we'd be replacing the bricks at that intersection, and then milling and overlaying the rest of it. That's why, even though it's in the reconstruction section, it's not very much, because from their exploration, it looked like there's just bricks down at Britain.
Right.
And then Mine Street was pretty much reconstructed. So that was the streets that they had suggested looking at, because of the prices we came up with. Obviously, they're all valid. Some are, you know, probably cost prohibitive. Wall is probably cost prohibitive to do that whole section. It really needs it.
I was going to say, there's a couple on there that jump out number-wise that maybe are out of the budget for the year, but maybe we can apply for some grants for.
Well, just to circle around about that, what we have now is, we have a $100,000 grant, if you guys might recall, to do part of Britain. We were thinking, our suggestion would be to do Britain at 11, because of how bad that is, going around that curve where it's a hit break there.
Yeah, that's horrible.
So we were thinking about starting there with $100,000 and expanding out. We can't start that one yet, because Teddy from our office checked last week. The agreement's not finalized in place yet, so we're waiting on that, but that's what we figured we'd do with that. We also, last fall, we had also put in another grant to try to get more of Britain done.
Right.
So we got those grants in the works. And...
Yeah, do you know what the amount was for that, for that grant, though? Could we hold off on Britain altogether and hope the grant card was all there, or is it going to...
I mean, we just got, we haven't, we haven't got the agreement yet.
Yeah.
So usually, though, you know, we can stretch it out for like four or five years. You get so many years right off the bat, and then you can usually ask for extensions. So if we wanted to try to hold off to do it all at one time, that's kind of up to you guys, but it just seems, the only reason, the only reason we were thinking about moving forward is just seems like that are just, it's getting worse.
Yeah.
It seemed like it was a lot worse than when we originally applied for the grant. But it's not a bad idea to try to wait. We should find out within the next couple of months, hopefully, if we got the other grant.
Well, do you think it's better to do that work all at once, or to piece that out, just to make maybe the neighbors that live on the street happy? So we're not blocking the entire stretch of road?
Well, there is, I mean, to face it, isn't a bad idea, because then you can get people around it easily and stuff like that. But again, we were just thinking that, it seems like that was deteriorating.
I just wondered if we could use that $100,000 to pave something else and hope that we get the grant for the whole thing, but I know you can't bang on that.
No, we have, we got to use it on Britain. We can use it on anywhere from...
Maybe that's how I should ask that question.
The grant was for anywhere from 6th Street to the top.
So that $100,000 has to be spent for Britain.
Yeah, that was, it's for Britain. But we, that was just our suggestion during that intersection. If you guys saw the bad section.
Yeah, that's the worst part. If we have to use it there, nothing else.
But, and it's you guys' choice, too. If you want to hold off a little bit to see if we get that other grant in the fall, I mean, that's your, that's your call, too.
Yeah, no, I mean, that changed everything. I probably should have asked that question first, if we had needed there.
Yeah.
Because I was like, if we can move that through the rest of the street, then, you know...
Well, and it helps if we, if we can utilize, you know, the grant money for Britain Avenue, cut some costs off of the paving that we want to do from our budget. So if we have $100,000 allocated for paving, then we actually have $200,000 with the Britain Avenue money. So we can kind of use the grant money for Britain and then allocate some of these other streets that are in worse shape.
And I don't think, if you want to try to piggyback those two together, like your program with the grant, I don't think that's a problem either. I think we, we just have to, when we do it, we'll just have to keep things separate, so that they don't get the strings crossed. The way we usually break up our paving contracts, they're used by street anyways, so we just have to pay for Britain out of the Britain fund and everything else out of the, which we do that all the time, so.
I obviously think that, in general, the Wall Avenue one's just really high. And it's probably, it's not something we can address right now.
They're going through the, like I said in that email, so we, about $125 from capital improvement, and we can probably squeeze out $100 from our surplus in the general fund. The other thing I thought, we could probably transfer money from the bond fund to pay part of the bond, instead of paying the bond out of the general fund. That's the way the budget's set up now.
Can we repeat that last part? I'm sorry.
So we have the bond sinking fund. The money's been stashed away to pay for the bond, and we just, we haven't had to use. So if, if that section of Wall Avenue was so bad that we need to get it done, I'm saying if we take $125 from the capital improvement, that'll still, that'll still leave $130, $140 in that capital improvement fund. And then there's probably about a little over $100,000 surplus in the general fund we can use, so now we're up to $225. And we don't need, let's do math on that, Dan, but if we would do Center, it definitely needs done. I don't think we can put Center off anymore.
So that's school as well?
Well, school, the thing with school is, the upper part's bad. So it'd be nice to partner with Monroeville.
Monroeville would do that, yeah.
I've already reached out to them. They told me they had no plan to do it in '24 or '25, so the only thing is, we have to see, maybe they have a plan to do it in '26. Because maybe we'd get a better price if you do the whole, the whole street, and then we just pay for our portion of Monroeville.
What is the horrible part of Center? I'm sorry.
From, from Highland to the new pavement. It's just, it's potholes on both lanes.
From Highland?
From where the road was...
From the top of the hill down towards...
Down to where we fixed the side.
You don't have to drive that.
I drive it, I walk it. I don't think it's that horrible.
It's horrible.
The new road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's some potholes.
Yeah, it's not horrible.
I think it's horrible.
You don't think?
That team was like, Center has to be done, and I'm like, I think it's not bad.
There's potholes and...
Well, now let me ask about Wall Avenue. Wall Avenue was picked up by every utility company that has come through. What are they responsible for? Don't they have to pay for curb-to-curb?
They have to pave curb-to-curb, but if it's, if it's a base problem, like Dan said...
And like it keeps sinking, is that what you mean?
Right. It's that the one on Wall. Who made this, who made this end up sinking?
Well, one call we had up ahead about the water, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but when I talked to Jim late last week, he was going to try to get hold of the water authority to make sure if they had any plans to do anything on that section of wall, or if they had any indication of any leaks or anything, because that's what's really tearing them up. That we're up in a lot of places. So we were going to try to coordinate with the water authority to make sure, if we do it, they're not going to come right back in or the street again, too. So I just wanted, I forgot to throw that out there.
I would make mention that there is a port there that there was a break, that they didn't do curb-to-curb yet, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sinking again. They came out twice.
So there's a possibility that, well, there's a guarantee that they're going to have to come back.
They're investigating the storm drains, and they're not sure if there's any sewers that are under there, because there's no manholes. Through the district of town, manholes have been covered, and then you don't know where they're at, and there's a possibility to be a leak in sewer, and that's why we're, you know, it's getting...
Okay, so we have to put Wall Avenue on hold right this minute.
Yeah. Until we figure out...
Yeah, until we find out, but that's, I mean, that's not, not like they're paving it for us, anyway.
We could, we could at least review the list that they...
But I'm just wondering if this price, this amount is going to change based on the things that are found, so that's why I'm like, I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket for Wall Avenue either, so.
Well, if the price could change, like I said, we threw in extra base repair in there, and we won't know that until we get the top off, to see what the actual subbase and base looks like. So there is, that number's a little higher, but we figured we...
So I like that you intentionally make them higher. I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean...
Have they decided with the sewer project, whether it's going to come down Center Avenue and all, or it's going to get down over to Hill to Taylor?
Right now, it's still supposed to be down over the hill. We haven't staked out like that. There's, there's stakes in the harbor into the woods. They haven't done the core sample yet to check the, I was talking to the Geotech expert last week, we're trying to get that meeting, so...
So there's still a possibility they may come down Center?
Well, really not. I was looking at that the other day. I don't really know what that gains is. We tear up a lot more road, and we can probably get around most of...
That's why I'm asking, because they're repairing different things if we're going to...
We looked at that the other day, like, again, last week, revisited that, and it just doesn't seem like it would be feasible, so... But if we would do that with lots of, we wouldn't pay the other support at Center.
We're talking roads now, so we won't be wanting to do sewers.
Yeah, sorry for the 500 questions. I'm just trying to like, we want to pave roads, but I want it to make sense at the same time.
They're good questions, and obviously, you want to think about what you just brought up, because of what's going to pave at Center.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, when we talked earlier last year, there was talk about maybe trying to get Taylor paved. Well, if we're going to, you know, run that sewer down at Highland, there was no sense paving Taylor, because we just tear it out to here. So it's all good questions, but when I looked at it last week, it didn't, it still wasn't, it still didn't look like it was a good option, because you still would have to go, well, we can, you know, take up everybody's mind, but...
Well, we have a list now, so that's at least a start. We can kind of go with, you know, what we have going on with looking into the grant agreements and stuff like that, and the sewer samples, and see where we're at. Any other comments on paving? All right. I have a motion to approve payment application number four to Curry and Keppel for the Taylor Avenue Bridge Project in the amount of $20,649, $3,792 is to be paid from the sewer capital fund.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Dan, everything's up to par on that, right?
There is still the restoration work. We're still holding $7,000.
Okay.
Um, start with that one. Um, there's still some restoration work, and there's, there, um, they're still under bond, basically guaranteed, cause, um, if you guys drove out there, there's some movement with the, the pavement. I don't know if it has to do with weather, but the, I, um, talked to the contractor last week. We wanna try, they're supposed to come out and do the restoration work in that laydown area, since this is supposed to be a nice week. And, um, we'll try to set up a meeting next month to look at the paving to see if, see what we can save. But, um, I know Mark and I were looking at it the other day when I was out there, and, you know, it's a couple more...
Yeah, it's not, it's not the greatest, lovely visor.
Yeah, um, but, um, well, who knows? In the regular year, maybe there wouldn't have been an issue, but you see how the roads are just falling apart everywhere. But, the contractor's put on notice, we let him know last week. I, I, I had a, had, had a meeting with him, and we're, hopefully, whenever the freezing thorns probably outlive, they'll out there and we'll get it again, loop the burrow in, and you can all take a walk and see what, what's going on out there. But, this isn't, this isn't the final payment, there's still seven thousand dollars sitting there, too, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is all under streets, lease, up, parks, and wreck.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve that Turner's Car Club for the car cruise on April twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Questions?
Questioned up?
I, I think we need a roll call vote for this, just because it supports the fire department, not to be rude, but I would prefer it to be that way, and I would like there to be a discussion.
Uh, yeah, was there ever, nobody approached us for this area to be used?
This is, that's what we're bringing up.
Right, he, he, they filled out an application, and then it's presented to the board to be approved and marked.
Well, he should have filled that out before he started advertising it.
So, I had a discussion with them, and I was hot-headed, and I'm not gonna lie, and I do apologize. Um, but, uh, I talked to, I was getting slack from Camp G because they wanted to know why somebody else was having an event the same day everywhere, which I don't have a problem with. I just wanna have parking for the elderly people that bring their grand, grandchildren. So we did move the time up for the Easter egg hunt to ten o'clock. So that should solve any problems there might be. I think.
Should, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Come on. But, if, if the fire department was involved with this, didn't somebody tally them of our protocol before just...
If I'm correct from Mike, he went through the protocol. He filled out an application, and now it's coming to the board. So I'm, I'm missing where the protocol was missed.
Well, shouldn't he have figured out if we were gonna vote for this first before advertising? Knowing that we have always had the other Easter egg hunt and stuff? I mean, I, I'm all for the fu, come on, Tommy, I'm all for the fire department, you know that. I tried to help you guys out.
He filled out the, he filled out the application a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
That's not a pro, that part is great.
Your, your concern is that if you were, we were to vote no, why was he already advertising?
Correct, yes. Exactly.
What you're saying is, it was never presented to us.
If he told you about it a month and a half ago, would have brought to the last council meeting, not the last council meeting. So it couldn't have been a month and a half ago.
How about parking for people coming in?
He's here. Where do you plan on putting the cars and things?
Everything's gonna be back here. That small lot's not gonna be touched up top. So everything's gonna be back in the back by...
So you stand up?
Yes, yes, sorry. Everything's gonna be backed by the basketball courts and over towards the fire department. Um, cause we're gonna have, the, the fire department's gonna do the food. We're gonna do the food ourselves. Um, I'm actually involved in both organizations, and, um, so we're gonna use our outside kitchen where all the tables are. So everything forward and everything over here, nothing's gonna be touched. Everything's gonna be backed by the basketball courts.
Where are the cars going to be parked for the car show?
Uh, from the fire department back by where the, uh, power station is, all the way, like...
On the field?
No, not on the field, not on the, no.
Okay, that's okay.
No, no, no cars will be on the grass.
Oh, my.
No. All the cars will be in the parking area, not in the grass. The grass is just gonna be used for the kids to do the Easter egg hunt, take pictures with the bunny. Um, we have raffle baskets going, we have fifty-fifties going, and like I said, all pro...
How much does the fire part, department make out of that?
This is our first one. So, we are a five oh one C three. Our organization is a five oh one C three nonprofit. We take nothing, not even our startup. Everything we do goes right to our organizations. So we do different fire departments, we do Plum, uh, we're doing Murgesville Police K nine, we're doing, obviously, our fire department, we do stuff for Saint Jude. Anybody who calls us who are nonprofit or needs help with something, we give a hundred percent away. We don't even take our startup. Most of it comes out of our members' own pockets to fund the startups.
So our fire hall will...
We'll, we'll gain the proceeds from...
Yeah, a hundred percent of the proceeds, whether it's five hundred dollars or it's five thousand dollars, the fire department will be, we will be cut a check that day for whatever the proceeds are.
Have you done this in the past?
Oh, yeah, yep. We did, um, Murgesville last year, we did Murgesville Police.
How many cars do you have?
Every show's different. Um, you know, our own members have to pay for the come into the show, too.
Okay.
Um, we're not doing a, a buy-in for this show, just cause it's more related to the kids, just to get the community involved. Um, but usually it's ten dollars, but our club will be bringing twenty cars ourselves, and we all pitch in. And every show's different. We've had shows, um, like up in Monroe, we had the Clash of the Clubs. Uh, we have three hundred and seventy-some cars there, and we've had shows where we've had fifty cars. So it's hit and miss. I don't expect three hundred and seventy cars, considering it's April, and a lot of, some people don't wanna bring their cars out yet. Like I said, this is, we put the car show on, cause we're a car club, but this is mainly just a beginning of the year event. Let's get the, everybody out, hopefully it's nice, get the community involved, let the kids from all over be able to come out and have a good time.
And the fire department was just involved because they came to us as the beneficiary for the money. And as the fire department came, that's why whenever Lisa questioned me, I said, I am not really in charge of the event. The fire department doesn't organize the event. What we do is, you're benefiting from the event, so we come in, we sell our food, our items and stuff like that, and then they run the car show.
Yeah.
So I told, when he approached the fire department about it, I sent him directly to Mike at the borough for an application and any kind of information. So that's where I said, he went by whatever process he had to go through. Now, whether that was done a month ago or two months ago, I can't tell you, because I wasn't the one doing so.
Well, when I got the application, it was February first. And when I talked to the, I forget the lady's name, and Mike in the office, nobody had heard or had scheduled the one for the Camp G. And that is why we picked that date. And I wasn't trying to step on anybody's toes, I, you know, if there's a different, if, if that would've, if Mike would've said like, hey, this is already on the calendar, this is what we're doing, somebody's already talked to us, I would've picked a different date.
I think it was announced at the council meeting, I think Parks and...
He had, he had the application in prior to that, and honestly, I didn't think, I didn't think it was gonna be this big of a conflict, uh, because they were doing it down by the fireworks.
Okay.
It's basically two different things.
I, I was under the, understanding that the field was...
No, no, I would never park any cars on the field, no, absolutely not.
Yeah, I was...
No. No, like I said, the field's just gonna be used for the kids, that way they're not running around looking for Easter eggs or taking pictures of the bunny in the gravel and having a chance to get hurt. So if they wanna run around looking for Easter eggs, they can do it in the grassy areas where they're not gonna fall and get hurt. But there will be no cars parked on that field, trust me on that one.
Okay.
And people come in to see, see your vehicles, they'll be parking over in this part of the parking lot?
They can park back by us, um, if Ms. Petrowski's event is done, you know, if they wanna park up there after her event's done, or if they wanna park over here, but the car show itself will be back here. Um, like I said, it's free for anybody.
Can I request that you make a sign to put up at this...
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
For people to come down this way?
That is not a problem.
Um, just because, I mean, I know events, people come early.
Yeah.
Just, I have little kids, and I don't want any...
So they might be coming in both sides?
Yeah.
But we will direct them on where they can and cannot park until your event is done. That is not a problem.
And we should be, we should be done and out of there before noon.
Yeah, that's, like I said, not a problem. I am willing to work with anybody, just, I'd just like to be on the respectful side of it. Let's figure out whether we could both have a successful event.
I kinda wish we could've worked together on this in hindsight, because it could've, uh, been the...
Yeah, this is our, this is...
But it didn't work out that way.
This is the first time we've ever done it, so, I mean, it's possible if it's a big thing, we can just...
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to do it again. Um, the way that we do run the car show, though, is we never do the same beneficiary twice in a back-to-back year. Um, just because we, we wanna spread it out. We don't wanna do the same people every year just to give everybody a fair chance. Um, so next year, if, I actually wanted to talk to Chief Barelli over here about it. Um, if next year we'd be open to it, since we can't do the fire department, maybe do one for the K nine program? And then maybe we can team up with Camp G, and we could just do one big event for everybody together, and all the proceeds go to the K nine program.
I mean, you work with G, or you work with Park and Rack.
But the...
To say it, I'm not on G.
He's not sure.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know which one you're, I know you're obviously Park and Rack, I didn't know if you were with Camp G too, but if we could all work together, and then we can help fund the K nine program and help Chief Barelli out, too.
Yeah.
Because we don't do the same beneficiary, so it'd be completely different. We could do that, too, and we can just run one big event next year.
Sounds good.
If you'd like to talk about that in the future.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah.
I hope that addressed everything that there was questions about.
I say let's get the fire truck paid off. Maybe that's the answer for that, honey.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with a roll call vote here.
Thank you.
Jim Rolla?
Yes.
Casey Petrowski?
Yes.
Tom Dick Jr.?
Abstain?
Dominic Rivera?
Yes.
Bill Cornrout?
Yes.
Deborah Marte?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.
And I just would like to announce that the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April twelfth, at ten AM. And the night market is Friday, April twenty-fifth, from six to nine PM. And that is all.
One more.
Yes.
April, yeah. Thank you. Finance and Economic Development, Bill Cornrout.
Motion to pay the bills as presented?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to renew the liquid fuel certification of deposit when it matures on April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to transfer forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents from the Taylor Avenue Bridge account to the general fund for reimbursing of the engineer and, uh, all of this cost.
Second.
Motion made, second. Do the transfer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to open a new bank account for the DCNR grant, improvement to the Joseph Marcosic Sports Complex upgrade with President Tom Dick Jr., Vice President Jim Rolla, and Borough Manager Mike Boland as the signees.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Health and Welfare, Deb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Turner has submitted his reports for council. Uh, we need to discuss a date for cleanup day for in May. And I was gonna throw out the option of May third, I believe that was, or May tenth.
You're looking Saturday, Deb?
Yes. Generally, they're always held on Earth Day or the week after, but with the night market and stuff, we found it, um, just a little rough for the cleanup day to be after. But, yeah, either May third or May tenth. So we need to select, first select the date.
Who's available to help? How about we...
That's a good idea.
Quick day's been arranged.
Yeah.
When's Kennywood?
Usually May twenty-second or May nineteenth for Gateway.
Any day you can get in the gate. That's when Kennywood.
Usually they're towards the third, towards the end of May, or two, or not two...
May eighteenth.
Towards the end of May.
May eighteenth?
That's what it says.
Okay.
May, you know, Sunday?
Yep.
They're having it on a Sunday?
Twenty twenty-four day discount off for May eighteenth.
Yeah, we need twenty twenty-five.
We need twenty twenty-five.
Since this day, there are probably...
Yeah, I would like to have May third.
Do we need to ask this electronic waste recycling place which day?
I gave them a couple days in April, and I gave them May third, and they said they were, they were available.
They were available, yeah.
I, I like the third, then.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion, unless anybody has any other questions, I'd like to make a motion uh, for the date for cleanup day to be May third.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions? What time is that at, Deb? Is that usually nine AM?
Eight, usually eight to eleven AM.
Eight to eleven, okay.
How many locations are we going to?
It is, first let's just vote on the date, and then we...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Locations?
Um, right now, we're just figuring, because we did not fill up, we had four last year, five?
We had five last year, we only filled one, one and a half.
We only filled up one.
Yeah, one and a half.
One and a half.
It's not well advertised. And did we only have the one location last year?
We only had the one location last year. Two years ago, we had two locations, but we only filled a half on at the top. So I, again, I'd have to check with Colonel to see if we can use his place if you wanna put a dumpster up there.
I don't know, since he planted glasses, put sidewalk in.
We haven't pulled one out of Sugar Camp in years.
It's, they end up, they did, we filled up the one down here. I mean, it, it's so central.
You have, they have more room here, and we haven't been filling the dumpsters, whether we advertise it or not, cause two years ago, it was advertised quite a bit.
It's also easy for people to wait down here. You don't get a long block in the road.
More, yeah, the roads don't get blocked.
The town's not that big, you don't have to drive that far to get to, get to Center.
Can we do a summerish build as a drop-off?
I don't think so, because if we end up with a lot of wet weather, the, the dumpster will just get stuck. And then, yeah, people will be blocking up Center Avenue.
Yeah. And we were, we were just thinking four. Mike was saying maybe three, four. We'll do four just in case.
Okay.
If we're having the TV thing down there, say, or the electronic thing at the same time, maybe it will attract more people.
It might, cause there's cages for that, though.
Noble's bringing metal, metal cages.
Cages.
Bins, like, to put the TVs in.
There are eight cages.
Separate from the, uh, from the dumpster.
So, yeah, they'll be, that'll be separate, so we were thinking at the max, four.
Yeah.
But with only, not, just filling one last year, but again, that was the day after the night market, and I don't know if, it was raining.
It's not well advertised.
Yeah, but the year before it was, but see, and it still didn't get filled. So it's, we just waste the money by getting five.
Yeah. We try, try with what we, with the four, and...
Well, maybe we can get Nick and company to go out and tell people that they need to clear their yard out and, you know...
Bring it down.
And dump it down there.
Yeah, it could be a good start. When you're about to sight him, you could be like, well, on this day, you can...
Let them know the dumpster's there and they're trashing it. If it's still there after the dumpsters are gone, they will be sighted.
We put it on the board over here on Broadway, everybody passes that.
It's gonna be in the newsletter, I mean...
Yeah.
You could probably put a note on, uh, one of the electric bills, too, if you really wanted to, right?[1735.82]
Right.
So we could send it out, you could put a little note at the bottom, cleanup day this day, right?
Right. Okay, next on the line, I'd like to make a motion to approve the service agreement for the electronic waste recycling services with Noble Environmental, and those are the ones that we're going to collect, bring these cages for the televisions. Again, there's no consoles though, it's, it's flat screens, it's not computer, it's just.
Flat TVs?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, second.
Motion made, second, any questions on that?
She said it's only flat TVs.
Yeah, correct, no, no consoles.
We don't wanna be picking up console TV and putting it in these bins.
Tube, tube TVs, no.
Okay.
I believe the Moreau Mall is holding an event, I think, March fifteenth.
Moreau did, did one on the eighth. Moreau did one on the eighth, I don't know if the mall do one or not.
Somebody was holding one, I believe, for old TVs only, for collectors, and it's old monitors, they have to be working, I'll have to recheck what I read. But there must be a working tube TV or a tube monitor, the old kind. And they said it was for collectors, and you put it in the trunk, you don't go into the mall, it's supposed to be a drive-through. I'll, I'll try to re-find that, but that, again, if your tube TV works, it'd be a place and it's free. They take, they would just take it.
Saturday, March fifteenth?
I believe that's what.
The free TV monitor television recycle collection day program?
Yes, thank you.
That's a name.
That's a, that's a.
That's a, that's a name.
Back to the motion, any other questions for the service agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so now, last, since we have all that behind us, we need to set a rate for the TV collections, I'd like to make a motion for that.
Do you have to make a motion for the amount, the amount has to be?
To set, yes, and what Mike and I kind of brainstormed, Mike suggested, for forty inches, these flat screen TVs, forty inches and under, that we would charge the person ten dollars. And that's fairly reasonable compared to a lot of other takeback places. And if it was over forty dollars.
Four hundred and forty inches?
Forty inches, yes, thank you. Over forty-one and above, it would be twenty dollars. And again, no, flat screens only, even if it's a flat screen monitor.
What do they charge?
Fifty-five cents a pound, so a forty-inch TV weighs about twelve pounds, which is about seven dollars and fifteen cents. A sixty-inch TV, I think, was forty pounds, so it was like twenty-two, twenty-two fifty. So just to keep the math simple, I figured ten dollars for the fourteen smaller and twenty-three, so it'll probably all come out.
So it's not costing us money in the long run.
Right. Well, cleanup day costs us a lot in the long run, no matter what, so. We're just trying to.
Right, it does.
Trying to cut the losses.
There's gonna be down there to collect the fees.
What's that, I'm sorry?
There's, you said there's gonna be cages down at the cleanup there, who's, who's collecting the fees down there? Do they come to the office first?
No, somebody's gonna have to be there to collect the fees, that's why I made sure to say that I'm not gonna be here May third or May.
I'll be, I'll be down there, it's when I, I told him that I was available. Betsy?
I can sit down with you guys too.
Deb, you wanna make your motion with the rate in there?
Okay, is everybody satisfied, or did anybody else have any other suggestion for that? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to set the rate at ten dollars for a forty-inch or small.